The time is 6:00 PM. I would like to lead our caucus prior to beginning the meeting. We're just going to review the meeting agenda and then I'll officially call the meeting to order. Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Parker will lead us in roll call. Please note, Councilman Rodriguez is excused this evening. The invocation will be led by Councilman Jones, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilwoman Daniels. For communications, we have a presentation by Mr. Todd Vanderwoody, Executive Director of the Downtown Improvement District on the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Then we will move to courtesy of the floor. Next, approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on February 27th, 2024. Then you will hear reports of committees. I will share a brief report on behalf of Chair Rodriguez, our Public Works Committee Chair, on the work session that occurred on March 5th, 2024. Next, you will hear from Vice President Green, our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, on the work session of March 5th, 2024, followed by Chair Davis, our Building and Housing Committee Chair, on the work session of March 5th, 2024. And the final committee report will come from Chair Rawls, our Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee Chair, on the work session of March 5th, 2024. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. We will then move to resolutions. Resolution 14 of 2024, we will vote upon. Resolution 15 of 2024, we will vote upon. Resolution 16 of 2024 will move to the Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee. Resolution 17 of 2024 will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Resolution 18 of 2024 will also move to the Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee. And the final resolution for this evening is Resolution 19 of 2024. It will move to the Public Works Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business?
Yes, I just want to briefly discuss some things going on in Harrisburg this weekend.
Okay, any other new business? All right, and then we will adjourn. So the time is 6:03 PM. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez is sick, out sick, and which is excused, and Ms. Bowers.
Present. And yes, Councilman Rodriguez is excused this evening. The invocation will be led by Councilman Jones.
Thank you. I just want to say, send some condolences out to the family of Justin Colfield, who lost his life in Dolphin County Prison and was just laid to rest Friday. So if you can join me briefly for a moment of silence and continuous prayers for their family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Daniels.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. For communications this evening, we will hear from Mr. Todd Vanderwoody, Executive Director of the Downtown Improvement District, who will share a presentation on the upcoming St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the invite to be here this evening. Beautiful evening out there, and we get to talk about fun stuff, the parade coming up. Just a couple of notes. The parade is actually this Saturday, March 16th. It'll begin at 2:00 PM. A little bit about the parade route. The staging will take place on Market Street Bridge. A lot of the groups get ready on City Island and line up on the bridge. The parade route actually goes down Market Street, turns left on Second Street, goes all the way down Second Street to North Street, and then takes a left on North Street to Front Street and then back to City Island. The stages will be set up right out in front of the City Government Center here, the viewing stage, and that's where we'll be announcing all the groups. It's a great place to view the parade. It is right along Market Street and of course, Second Street, and we have quite a few people that line up for the parade. All the details on the parade, and I'm going to mention this another time, can be found on our website at harrisburgstpatricksparade.com. Just to kind of kick the day off, I'll talk a little bit more about the parade. But to kick the day off, we're going to have a race. The 2024 Lucky Charm Four Mile Race will kind of start off the festivities on Saturday, and that race will begin at noon. And it actually, it uses the same street closures, kind of the same route as the parade. They start and finish right at the staging area, which is kind of neat, very unique. Run up to Second Street, around the Capitol on State Street there. And then they come back down Front Street to City Island, do a loop around City Island, come back into One Street Bridge, and the finish line is right here in front of the City Government Center again at the stage. Again, that race starts at noon. And each runner will receive a medal and a race tee shirt and a gift certificate to Fleet Feet, the big sponsor of the race. And there's be over 900 participants in that race. It's one of the bigger races here early on in the race season. And of course, age group awards were presented right there at the stage at 1:00, right here in front of the City Government Center again. And, you know, again, that's a great race to kind of kick off the racing season here for all those runners out there. The Harrisburg St. Patrick's Day Parade, again, many, many groups participate in this parade, and I just want to mention a few of them. And we have, gosh, 60 to 70 groups signed up right now. And some of the groups, some of the fan favorites, Blue Moon Cruisers, the McGinnings School of Irish Dance, the Carrig School of Irish Dance, various pipe bands and drum Irish bands, Friendly Sons of St. Patrick, Notre Dame Club of Harrisburg, Harrisburg University, Whittaker Center, of course, Star Wars groups, Clowns, the Zembo Shriners will be there. One of the all-time favorites is the old iron collectors. That's the old tractors that go around. You know, and again, one of the big things, of course, we have all the local fire departments that participate, including our very own Harrisburg Fire Department, so we're happy for that. And that's what, you know, the kids and families love to see that. So really, the parade has something for everyone here in downtown Harrisburg. We couldn't do the parade, of course, the Downtown Improvement District, we host the parade, but we couldn't do the parade without many of our sponsors, many generous sponsors. And one of them, for the past few years, has been Cargill. They also support the Harrisburg Holiday Parade. So they've been a big sponsor of ours year in, year out. And they're a pot of gold sponsor. We also have a few Lucky the Irish sponsors, Ace Distributing, Explore Harrisburg, and Renewal by Anderson. And of course, a lot of our downtown businesses, bars and restaurants, support the parade. Bourbon Street Saloon, JB Love Drafts, Micropub, Nocturnal, Brick House, Cafe Fresco, Aruga, Zendies, McGraths, Sturgis Speakeasy, and Mad Moose. So we want to thank those sponsors because otherwise we wouldn't be able to hold the parade year in, year out. I also want to give a shout out to our Sound, Ross Productions. They've done the sound the last couple of years for our parade and the city's holiday parade. So we want to thank them. Just a word about the street closures. I know there's a lot of questions always about the street closures. So streets will be closed from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM in the downtown district here. The Market Street Bridge will close at 11:00 AM. That's for the parade to line up, and also the race will take place on one of those lanes right after noon. That's about mile one of the race there, the Market Street Bridge. And that, those roads again, will be remained closed till about 4:00. Parking would be available at the Market Street Garage there, Market Square Garage, I should say, right there at the corner of Second and Chestnut for $10, thanks to Park Harrisburg. And also for downtown meter spots, you can get four hours of free parking with the code LUVHBG, Love Harrisburg. That code gets you four free hours. So we're happy to put on the parade once again this year. Supposed to be a beautiful day here in downtown Harrisburg. We invite everybody to come out and enjoy a great family event. And, you know, be sure as you're downtown here to visit our many restaurants and other businesses here in downtown Harrisburg. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move to courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You'll have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. If you are here with a group, we ask that you designate a spokesperson. So I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer a public comment?
Good evening, Ronald Johnson. I think this is my 17th year of coming down here. But first, let me thank Councilman Jones for meeting with the community leaders of the city. There's a lot of carnage of our own. You know, we're burying our young people. Our elders are scared to come outside. You know, when the lights go down, they stay in. The kids, they don't want to come outside and play like the kids are supposed to play. And I promised from the Neighborhood, Allison Hill Neighborhood Watch Group, that I would be the spokesperson because I have a lot of elders here with me, and I'm trying to get them back in before the lights go down, you know, because they don't want to be outside. And as usual, I said, what are we going to do? You know, and I'm trying to work with Councilman Jones, but I still have to speak on behalf of the community. And it's not just one community. It seems like every community in the city has the same issue, you know, and that's the gun violence. And it's unnecessary. And, you know, I'm trying to keep everybody together because, you know, where are we going to run to? You know, because it seems like it's everywhere. You know, even from the suburbs to across the river, wherever, you know. They might not talk about it a lot, but, you know, being out here on the front lines, I get to talk to neighbors one-on-one. And, you know, some of the issues and the incidents that happened to them, they're not even being covered by the local media or even on social media. And I'm trying to get all the residents to come down and learn about the way the city government works so that when they come to stand before this mic, they can address you and know what you're saying. So if that's all y'all want me to say, that's good enough. We're working on, oh, one more thing. Our priority is gun violence.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, brother. My name is Emmanuel Baya Thomas, and I'm the love of life. I'm here to speak about what he just addressed. We're having a march to save our children's lives Saturday at 11:00 Capitol Steps. It's a conglomerate of nonprofit organizations, coaches, community leaders. We're coming together to build the villages of yesteryears, where our neighbors took care of our neighbors. We knew our neighbors. The childrens were safe in our community. And we had programs to cultivate our future, which is our children. So we have a bunch of beautiful people that's joining in, the collective, to bring back town watch. There's so many different things that's going on. And we beg that the community come out and support. This is not about us. This is about our future. This is about our elders that have corner stores on their block. But they'll go walk or get in their vehicles and go three to four blocks to go to a store where they feel safe. There's too many of our children dying in the street. There's too many of us that say we tired of it and things has to change. But too many of us is not standing up to make that change. I'm willing to die in these streets for these children. I just came home two years ago. I was incarcerated for 25 years. I was one of them children. So I know what they didn't get, what they're not getting today because I never received it. I never had a mentor. I never had anybody to pick me up. I never had anybody to help me. So I dedicate my life. That's how I evolved into the love of life because I didn't love life before. I moved off of hate. I lived off of pain, my trauma. That's what they're going through. So it's about not individualizing these safe havens because there's so many safe havens that's thriving in our community. So many people doing beautiful things in our community, but they're doing it on individual basis. But we're coming together with this collective to build a family so we all can take care of each other with and for the love of life. I beg you all to check out the Eventbrite, The Love of Life, Saving Our Children's Lives. Sign up, join, become a part of something that's bigger than you. Effectuate positive change in our community. Invest in our future, which is our children. And we bring about a brighter future. Thank you for your time.
One second, excuse me. Do you mind sharing your address or the vicinity in which you live? And two, if you could state the date, the time, and location?
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you.
I live on 1620 Chestnut Street, 17104. The event is going to be on Saturday, the 16th, 11:00 to 4:00. We're going to meet on the Capitol Steps. We're going to have speakers speak for a period of time. And then we're going to go around the Capitol and march down State Street Bridge. Then we're going to march to 17th and State in front of the School Department. And we're going to speak there as well. And we employ the community to come out, have the children come out, coaches, and support our community, support our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer a public comment?
Good evening, council members. My name is Nicole Wooton. My address is 1515 North Second Street in Midtown. And I am speaking in favor of a resolution calling for a permanent and immediate ceasefire in Gaza. The world has spent the last five months recoiling in horror as image after image of this suffering is livestreamed directly to the news and to their social media feeds. Mothers wailing in agony, holding their children's lifeless bodies. Little girls that refuse to believe that they will never see their big brother again. Young men desperately trying to distract and entertain young children only for the sound of a distant bomb to make them all scream in terror, even if the danger has passed this time. Next time, they may not be so lucky. Even if their lives are spared from bombs and bullets, public health experts predict far more will die from starvation or infectious disease. Many children have already starved to death, and pregnant mothers face severe malnourishment. Gazans grind bird seed to make flour for bread. They scrounge for scraps wherever they can find it, potatoes they find on the ground or a moldy orange. Menstruating women and girls, if they are healthy enough to menstruate, have resorted to fashioning pads and tampons from scraps of the tents they shelter under. All the while, Israeli officials make statements saying that, if anything, they will escalate this slaughter. President Isaac Herzog stated in October that there will be no uninvolved civilians, that there are no uninvolved civilians. When he says that, let us be clear, he is referring to the people I mentioned before. Ask yourself, what threat do these children pose? What sort of coward is so consumed with fear and hatred of an entire ethnic group that he justifies killing children? In the view of this genocidal regime, their greatest crime is being Palestinian. The urgency of this resolution is self-evident from the suffering of Gaza. This slaughter, this genocide, it could stop tomorrow. If President Biden wanted, he could halt all weapons shipments to Israel, and their ammunition would be depleted within a few days. They might find new sources of ammunition, but you know what? At least they wouldn't be bought with my tax dollars, our tax dollars. More than 30,000 people are dead. More than 12,000 of them are children. To put that in perspective, the population of Harrisburg is only about 50,000 people. Everyone in this city can sense the devastation when even a single life is taken. Like when a young person is gunned down because someone he had a disagreement with decided a gun was a solution. Every one of those individual lives is irreplaceable. They had hopes, dreams, family, laughter. They walked down to the store to get a Coke and got a candy bar for their little cousin. They got good grades in school or played football. Their life is not so different from someone in Gaza. The children in Gaza go to school, fly kites, rest under olive trees that were planted by their great-grandfathers. And then a drone operator pulls a trigger, levels his home just because he was following orders. And then that drone operator goes home to his children and lies to himself for one more day that he's only defending his country. To close out my comments, if our elected officials refuse to listen to our calls for a permanent and immediate ceasefire, it begs the question, how many more lives will they give up in exchange for keeping our so-called greatest ally happy? If this man-made famine continues, numbers like 10,000 more, 50,000 nor will not be far-fetched. So council members, this is where you come in. Harrisburg could be a pioneer in averting this disaster. If you vote yes for this resolution, the voices of 50,000 Harrisburg residents will be added to the list of cities who have called for a permanent and immediate ceasefire, including St. Paul, Chicago, San Francisco, Atlanta, Detroit, many others. I urge you, make sure this beautiful city of Harrisburg is on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer a public comment?
Good evening. I'm Kay Pickering, Catherine Pickering. I live at 2855 Carden Road here in the city. And I'm a member of the Harrisburg Friends Meeting, which is 1100 North Sixth Street, Religious Society of Friends. We're very active here in the city. And we have adopted a statement, what we call a minute, on the Gaza-Israeli conflict. And so I won't read the whole thing, but I would like to just read a portion of that. Harrisburg Monthly Meeting, as part of the Religious Society of Friends, follows the Quaker testimony on peace, justice, and nonviolence based on the belief that the divine is in each person, resides in each one of us. Thus, we are deeply troubled by the suffering and injustice caused by the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. And we are concerned that our government pursues the violence by continuing to send billions of dollars of military aid to the region. We affirm the right of self-determination for both Israel and Palestine. We call upon our nation too, and we list many items here, but we support the call here. And there might be other churches and organizations in the city that now that we've come before council would also come and have the same kind of a resolution and statement from their congregations and their organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer a public comment?
This is my first city council attendance, so I'm not sure procedurally what, how things go. But I'm here about, there's some sort of bill that the Bureau of Codes and the city solicitors are trying to amend or maybe even a new bill. And I wanted to, I had talked to the city clerk, and I think he told me there was no opportunity for the public to comment, and so I wanted to be able to request that that the public be given the opportunity to.
If you wouldn't mind sharing your name and your address. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live.
Okay, I live in Midtown, and my name is Delane Andrews. And so I just would like the opportunity to, you know, for the community to comment on this proposed bill, either new bill or an amendment of an ordinance. I'm not sure what it is yet because I just heard something in the media about it. And so I'm still researching it, but I think it's appropriate because it's going to affect the community that the, you know, that the disordinance that's being proposed.
It's Bill 2 of 2024. We briefly discussed it last week, but we are going to discuss it again next week. So it's not on our agenda this evening for a formal vote, but there will be further discussion on the bill next week.
Will the public be allowed to comment?
Yes.
And how will we know, through attending the meetings, or how will we know when it's time to make a comment?
So during our work session meetings, that's when we discuss the legislation. And the public comment is generally at the end of the meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Yes, sure.
If you don't mind, I don't know if you're going to stick around, but I can definitely have a conversation with you or make sure you have my contact information and try to help you understand it. All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? And before you begin with your comments, if you could please speak into the microphone. I'm receiving several messages saying it's difficult for viewers to hear. So I don't know if you need to pick it up and put it closer to your mouth or if another microphone would be appropriate, but there are definitely audio issues.
Okay, my name is Fareed. I live in Rutherford. I came here to talk about the ceasefire resolution. I was born in Ukraine, and I moved to Harrisburg when I was about four years old in 1999. And one of the first close friends that I made in the city was a Palestinian-American. And to this day, I'm still very close to him and his family. So I find it hypocritical that when my country was invaded, there was a huge amount of aid, media coverage, and support given to the Ukrainian resistance. Currently, as Israel continues to murder unprecedented amounts of civilians, it feels as though we, as US citizens, are being condemned for calling for a ceasefire, and we aren't receiving support from the majority of our elected officials. I've worked in healthcare for several years and cannot fathom the idea that calling for the preservation of human life can be anti-American or anti-Semitic. And I would like to see the city that has been my home for the last 25 years sign a lasting ceasefire resolution. Furthermore, apart from my concerns about my town. Furthermore, apart from my concerns about my tax money supporting a genocide, a ceasefire is also important to me because I find the treatment and targeting of healthcare workers and infrastructure by Israel to be reprehensible, distressing, and inexcusable in and of itself as someone who has chosen a career in healthcare. If my elected officials could find the courage to get behind the ceasefire to protect innocent civilians from genocide and starvation and to protect all healthcare workers attempting to provide aid in an active war zone regardless of what country they come from, it would send a strong message to our greater political establishment and allow us to join the over 70 other cities that have signed ceasefire resolutions in the United States. And it would show that Harrisburg upholds the principles of a reflective democracy.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment?
Excuse me, sir, could you give your last name, Fareed? B-L-L-O, thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole Banks. I don't live in the city, but I have grandchildren that do. My oldest son, he did unfortunately. He passed away on the 23rd in Dolphin County Prison under suspicious. You know, no one knows what happened to him. They're not telling us anything. I'm not sure if the city council plays any part in receiving complaints, ideas, or whatever on how to fix the problem or whatever. It's just quite sad and horrible that there's been numerous of deaths out there at the prison under suspicion. No one knows what's going on. The conditions for sure are horrible, dirty water. Just the whole thing is just disgusting. And there has been other programs and organizations that have tried to help make a difference, but I guess they're just in one ear and out the other with whoever they go to, the leaders, the officials, or what have you. My son, um, it's hard to speak of him in past tense because he's still my son. Here on earth or not, but something has to be done. They shouldn't be treated like animals, having to suffer in living conditions that they do. You know, I know it's jail, but doesn't mean they're still human. Doesn't mean they should be mistreated, ignored, not have opportunities for reforming their lives. While in there, at least get it started more than just once a week or once a month. You know, there should be more to be done for those that are incarcerated for petty stuff. For instance, child support, which makes no sense. They get locked up for not paying support and they still can't pay support because they're locked up. So that defeats the purpose as well. As far as the city goes, it's disgusting how it's been left to the condition that it's in, from the potholes to no playgrounds for the children, no proper programs for the children. I moved away in 2016 and I came back. It's been a year since I've been back and it's just devastating and how... Don't want to point the finger, but since city council, you got members of economic development, building and housing, public relations, parks and recreations. I know some of you are new. What are you going to do? Because you haven't done nothing. There's a lot of talk, but no action, no resolution, no caring for the city of Harrisburg at all, obviously. You can look around. There's more to the city of Harrisburg than downtown, than Midtown. The children, the residents that live in the city are suffering horribly. And it's a shame. When I wasn't able to vote, but I did follow some of the things that the newcomers were presenting as to their position, if they were elected, current ideas from those that already hold a seat. And, um, it's just nothing being done. Where's the money, that 23 million? What are you going to do with it? Where's the park and recreations programs? When I was coming up, there was plenty for us to do, plenty. I'm not sure if the city still holds control of the school system, but that's even horrible. And nothing's being done. So I hope you guys do something about it other than sitting there talking a good game. And really do something about it. We have small children in a line of fire. Elderly folks being afraid to come out. School system is raggedy. The curriculum is ridiculous. Schools closing down. Do something about William Penn. Reopen it back up for vocational. I'm a graduate, 1988. Wasn't thinking about college, wasn't sure if I was smart enough to do that. And that helped me out. These young people have nothing to do and nowhere to go, but get in trouble. Do better. And if there's, if you guys, if anyone is a part of, you know, the prison system and how to reform and, you know, allowing programs in and out of there, do something. Call me, I'll lead it. I'm not a city resident, but my, my son was. And now he's gone. That's just pretty much all I have to say is just do better. Just do better, don't, don't talk it. You know, don't allow us to come here and fill these rooms and say, you know, hear us roar type of thing. And it's in one ear and out the other, because then what are you there for? So that's all pretty much I have to say.
My condolences, Ms. Banks. My condolences to you and thank you for speaking. And when you were asking, who would you need to speak to about the prison system? And I don't want to be incorrect, but I almost think it's the commissioners. They have meetings just like we do where the public can speak at them. So I would try one of their meetings because they are head of Dolphin County Prison. There's someone on their board. You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. And again, we offer our condolences. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? Seeing, hearing no one, anyone to my left? Okay.
Hello, my name is Fareed Zainadeen. I'm a resident of Rutherford. I'm a physician and I'd like to talk about the healthcare situation in Gaza right now. So Gaza had approximately 36 hospitals. And of that, only six are functioning. The UN says that they are barely functioning. When there was the attack on Al Ahli Hospital in October of 2023, we thought that Israel would be held accountable for this and that's not what we've seen. We've seen that this has been a pattern of attacks on healthcare systems and hospitals in Gaza that have gone unpunished as part of international complacency. To our horror, one after another, 30 hospitals, Al Shifa Indonesian Hospital, Al Quds Turkish Palestine Hospital, Al Khidmah Hospital, Al Nasser Pediatric Hospital, Rantisi Children Hospital, International Eye Hospital, the Cancer Hospital and the Hospital for the Elderly, the European Hospital, Al Amal Hospital, Kemal Adwan Hospital. These were all attacked and fully destroyed. The most recent casualty was Al Nasser Hospital, which was besieged for days with thousands of sick and injured patients inside. And all of the remaining staff were expelled. Gaza originally had a bed capacity of 2,500, now rendered basically ineffective with these hospitals not functioning. And this in perspective would have been to serve a currently 60,000-plus injured Palestinian civilians, men, women, and children. The systemic destruction of healthcare in Gaza is going to perpetuate and cause waves and ripples for many years to come. There are thousands of cancer patients and dialysis patients who now have nowhere to turn. And I think we know what will happen to them. They've all lost access to their care. Gaza has over 50,000 pregnant mothers. There are over 100 births daily where women are receiving C-sections without anesthetics. I'm just going to let that sit in for a second, a C-section without anesthesia. There's amputations happening without anesthesia. Massive burns aren't getting the first aid and treatment that they need. There's no pain medications left to give the patients that they are caring for. And it seems like we're almost in a dystopian world where these things should never be happening and we couldn't imagine these things happening, but they are. And I go to work every day feeling very guilty that as a doctor, I can take care of my patients and I have what I need and they ultimately have what they need. But it's very soul-crushing knowing that there's these events happening to my people and to healthcare workers where there's some complacency internationally. And I just think everybody needs what they deserve and they aren't getting what they deserve, which is help. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my left that would like to offer public comment? Pam, there was somebody before you. Okay.
I was just trying to save us a little time. Good evening, Council, Pam Parsons, 18th and Holly. There seems to be a theme here tonight, which is you need to do better. We're a theme about children and about accountability. And accountability starts at home. I have spent the last couple of weeks watching your marathon council meetings. And besides the outright pandering that I see sometimes to the camera, to people who are watching, there's a number of other things that I noticed. And our children are watching us. When we talk about gun violence, our children are watching. Not only what we say, but what we do. And that gets into the larger county, city, and internationally when we talk about accountability. So we tell our kids they need to do their homework and they need to be prepared for school. Yet I can tell when I'm sitting here and when I'm watching, who isn't prepared for council, who hasn't read the things? And I can tell by the questions that you ask. We tell our children they need to be, they need to tell the truth. They need to be accountable. Yet we have members of this council who have had legal troubles and have never mentioned it. We have folks sitting on this council who have had legal issues and who didn't bother to bring that up when they were running for office and we had to find out about it by accident. I'm not commenting on the criminality. That's a whole nother story. I am commenting on the lack of transparency and the lack of accountability. We talk about how we want to include everyone. Yet we talk about unhoused people, but they're never at the table. We talk about them, but they aren't here when we talk about them. We talk about being accessible, yet our interpreters are only here when we have legislative meetings. Are not the work meetings important too? And I'm glad to have four minutes, but I got this four minutes. You all allowed us to have four minutes to talk by banning children from the dais. You threw one of your fellow council members under the bus. You, you have council members, you have things, you say you want the community involved, yet there are council members who have blocked people from the social media, not because they were nasty to them or said any bad things, but because they ask questions. And interestingly enough, because I'm one of these people who looks at the agenda every Monday night, the resolution that everyone is here talking about was on the agenda last night. But when I looked today at noon, because I wanted to see if there was an electronic link, it wasn't there. So it's been taken off the agenda, but the agenda wasn't marked as a revised agenda. So... You know, you all have to... You all have to do better. And being transparent and being what you say that you are about is important. Not only when you're sitting here in front of the cameras, but when you're doing everything out there where people in the community can also see you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment to my left?
Good evening. I am Brian Kiesling. I live in Midtown. Little something about me, when I grew up, my family attended Temple Ohev Shalom just up Front Street. And I had the very unfortunate privilege of meeting a number of Holocaust survivors, speaking to them, learning from them, hearing their stories. Once a year, my Hebrew school class would cross the street and clean the Holocaust memorial. And there it says that the Holocaust could happen anywhere, anytime, to anyone. And I never really understood what those words meant until today. This need for a ceasefire resolution, a permanent and immediate ceasefire revolution, resolution is something that would be necessary even if it didn't connect to Harrisburg at all. As, as human beings, as, as people, we see what's happening in Gaza and we recognize a Holocaust unfolding as it happens. And I know from speaking with each of you that you know that and, and appreciate your understanding of the gravity of the situation from these conversations. Your feelings are clear and, and appreciated. What we need to understand though is that this does connect to Harrisburg and that Gaza is a connection. is a conveyor in the coal mine that we all need to be aware of. Systemic oppression is not a buzzword. It is not an abstract concept. It is a global interconnected web of forces and power, people in charge, systems that determine the laws that we live under, that determine how our society functions, and it impacts all of us. For example, you may have heard before about the deadly exchange, where American police go over to occupied Palestine, where Israeli police come over to the United States, they train each other on tactics. We all saw that video where George Floyd was murdered with a knee on his neck for nine minutes. That is a tactic that our cops and Israel's cops teach each other to do. I wrote... I wrote these notes earlier today and intended to bring up the Dolphin County Prison. I did not expect that we would hear such a personal story about that. But those many deaths that have gone unaccounted for in that prison are part of the same system that is inflicting a genocide in Gaza. And we have built a community here in Harrisburg where we recognize each other's pain, we recognize what each other is going through. There's a reason that when we were out at the March for Peace the other Friday, our organizers met their organizers, immediately talked, hit it off, start building those connections because we recognize the interconnectedness of our causes. You will see us at the Love is Life rally this Saturday. We are gonna be there because we recognize the interconnectedness of our causes. We are living in difficult times, and by every indication, things are only going to get harder for a lot of people. And the fact of the matter is, the people who hold power over us are elected officials. They are not doing what needs to be done to stop it. In fact, majority of the time, they are the ones perpetrating these crimes. So it's on us. It's on the people in this room. It's on the people on this council, who, as I've gotten to know you a little bit, you are this community too, you know? It's not the same as we go up to a senator who wouldn't even view us as people, you know? I meet with Councilman Jones, and he's greeting people on the sidewalk as they walk by because he is Harrisburg, Harrisburg is him. So for our Palestinian community, for our Harrisburg community, for our global community, we appreciate the work you have done with us in talking, in working on getting a ceasefire resolution put together, but I have to stress the urgency. I have to stress the fact that right now, even though we're talking about thirty thousand dead, we have to keep in mind that the people who count the dead have been killed. We need something that is immediate, we need something that is permanent, and it has to be bold. Our city needs to take a stance that is bold. Because we understand that injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere, and we understand that calling for a ceasefire there and calling for a ceasefire here are linked issues. So thank you very much for your time. We will keep working with you. And we will get something done. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to my left that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, before we move forward with this agenda, I just wanted to reply to some of the commentary that was received this evening. In response to our marathon meetings, we noted that we missed a few meetings in February. One was due to weather. The other one just was not scheduled, so we were catching up. So that's why the length of our meetings during the month of February were a little bit longer, but thank you for tuning in. Next, I wanted to address and remind everyone that we have a Kids' Corner, if you didn't know, in the back of the council chambers. It is equipped with books, games, coloring books about local government that were donated by our Bureau of Fire and Bureau of Police. We even have snacks to accommodate any child that attends our council meetings. The purpose of the Kids' Corner is for parents or other caregivers, guardians, grandparents, whomever, that have children that want to attend our meetings and participate. We have something for the children to do so that they're not left out of the conversation or just the information sharing that occurs. So I wanted to note that and remind everyone that there is a space, a dedicated space, not this dais, but a dedicated Kids' Corner for any child that wants to attend our meetings. We will now move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Council members, are there any revisions to these minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. As I mentioned, I will deliver a brief report on behalf of Chair Rodriguez in his absence. He serves as our Public Works Committee Chair on the work session of March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. So during the work session that occurred on March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Public Works Committee met to receive a quarterly report. This was the fourth quarter report for two thousand and twenty-three from the Department of Public Works, which includes traffic and engineering, fleet management, neighborhood services, and park maintenance. There are a total of seven divisions or departments under the Department of Public Works. So the department and division descriptions were shared, and these descriptions come directly from the budget document that we vote on and approve annually. The report also included a department organizational chart, which is helpful because we know last summer, there was a reorganization that occurred within the city where the Parks and Rec Department is now under Public Works. So that org chart is always helpful, a helpful reminder. Goals were shared for each division. Year-to-date spends were also shared for each division. Active grants were shared, vacancy updates, and finally, community engagement, interaction, and communication that occurred during, all during the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-three. So this concludes the report of the Public Works Committee. The next report you will hear will be shared by Vice President Green, who chairs our Budget and Finance Committee on the work session of March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Vice President Green?
Thank you, President Bowers. At the work session of March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Budget and Finance Committee received a fourth quarter report from the Bureau of Budget and Finance, presented by Director Kelly and Mr. McCutcheon. During the report, we got an update on the current state, excuse me, current state of the fund balance, as well as some highlights on the fourth quarter in the department and the two thousand and twenty-three goal progress and completion. We learned about the Bureau's involvement in the Tyler Technology System migration, as well as the progress made in the capital fixed asset, munis module, and inventory tracking. Some of the two thousand and twenty-three goal progress we were briefed on includes the completion of the two thousand and twenty-four budget book and budget hearings, the completion and awarding of the RFP for the capital improvement program, which was voted on by City Council in the previous session this year. The Bureau also achieved their goal of staying up to date with the state and federal reports, and the department is also in charge of the Grants Department, which secures and administers grants for the city. Council received an update on the current grants the city is in, excuse me, the current grants the city has and their progress. I would like to thank the Bureau for their thorough report, as well as all their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. The next report you will hear will be from Chair Davis, our Building and Housing Committee Chair, on the work session of March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, President Bowers. March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, work session of the Building and Housing Committee, specifically the Codes Department, to discuss Bill two-dash-two thousand and twenty-four. Could you read this into the record, Mr. Parker?
Resolution two of two thousand and twenty-four.
It's Bill two, but he doesn't have to during your report.
Doesn't have to, okay. Excuse me.
It's already been read into the record.
Okay, thank you. My report's gonna be a little extensive. During the work session on March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, Director Montgomery presented a PowerPoint presentation and shared that the new two thousand and eighteen IPMC will be updating the twenty-four-year-old IPMC, the newer version of property maintenance and amendments. Some ideals presented were the new methods of service and emails for notices, the creation of additional immediate citations, and further progressive fines for repeated offenders. Mr. Neil Grover of the Law Bureau shared that this bill is geared towards updating and modernizing the current IPMC, and there will be six different fines using the parking ticket example. If someone gets a ticket and doesn't pay, in three days, the ticket goes up to fifty dollars and is then sent to the district justice and so on. Also, enforcement conversations are taking place with judges and district judges and other leaders around the county on enforcement on various deliveries. Providing electronic notices as an option and instantaneous fines are possibilities. Mr. Grover shared that procedurally, there will be some changes when someone gets cited under this code, and that it's very hard for codes to enforce currently. Once someone gets a notice, it goes to the district justice. They may not, or they may get notified about a hearing and may not accept service. So until there is a hearing, there is no fine set. Currently, only a judge can set a fine. Therefore, there are no consequences, and the city is ignored for a very long time, and it takes extreme effort to get someone into court. He noted also that the owners, as well as property management of the property, is responsible and will be held responsible. Mr. Grover shares that we need the flexibility to enforce and mentioned the district justice not seeing property managers as responsible parties in addition to the owners. Also, there will be instantaneous fines and staggered fine, a fine system, over twelve months with a ticket system, and there will be an opportunity to pay the fine. There is a persuasion that there needs to be stronger enforcement in order for people to comply. There has been requests to consider the city and the courts working together via a housing court, perhaps two days per week in one location versus five or more district justice offices to eliminate confusion about when and where to go. This isn't an instant solution, though. Electronic notices with an opt-out form to be signed is being considered for those who do not want to receive an electronic notice. Apparently, notices are a way to avoid responsibility. People say they didn't get the notices or they never knew about them, although they've been sent seven times and have not returned back to the city. Postings will still have to be posted in some cases. This bill would help give codes direct authority to help them set up electronic notices, and clear indications about email address would come from registries that property owners file with the state and federal government. Codes will be able to rely on this information. Mr. Grover also mentioned, he, excuse me, council members had the opportunity to ask questions, and Mr. Grover mentioned he would give council bullet point documentation depicting what the major changes are. He also is prepared to accommodate council with another work session to give the, given the substantive amount of information. This is the end of my report for the Building and Housing Committee, specifically the Codes Department. Thank you.
Thank you. The final report we will hear this evening will come from Chair Rawls, the Chair of our Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee.
Thank you, President Bowers, and good evening, everybody. On March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Parks and Rec and Enrichment Committee met to deliver the quarterly reports for the Parks and Recreation and Enrichment Department and the Department of Facilities and Special Projects. We also met to discuss Resolutions fourteen and fifteen of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Sanders delivered the fourth quarterly report for the Parks and Rec and Enrichment Department. A few highlights from his department were expansion of the summer program and events and an increase in hosted programs such as the Spanish-speaking classes. Year-to-date spending has been on advertisement, which has increased participation in city-sponsored events. Mr. Sanders then shared goals for the remainder of the year, using ARPA money funds to update Wilson Park, Sunshine Park, and Reservoir Park, and to fill positions for assistant manager and park ranger. Director Baker gave the fourth quarterly report and highlights for facilities and special projects. Commence construction of the Broad Street Market temporary tent are as follows. KCS Electric Schundler Yesco is complete. The cost was ninety-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-two cents. McClure and Company Plumbing started on three-one-twenty-four. They donated their time and materials and slated to be completed by this week. Framing completion will be done by carpenters union and will be volunteered based. Sun Belt tent rental, which will be for two years, at two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Havik rental for two years for a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty cents. Annual goals for the special projects and facilities is as Public Works bathroom bid set to be completed in two thousand and four, and that cost will be at fifteen thousand for consultation. The mansion roof replacement set to be completed in two thousand and four for two hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-nine cents, using the two thousand and twenty-two budget funds. Mansion porch set to be completed in spring two thousand and twenty-four with a cost of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, using the two thousand and twenty-two budget funds. Public safety building fire panel set to be completed in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four for fifty-seven thousand dollars. Special project goals in the Facilities and Special Projects Department are as follows. The Broad Street Market bid is open for construction manager and closes March nineteenth, and their last goal was for the F and B field completion and updates. After our fourth quarterly report, we met to discuss Resolutions fourteen and fifteen of two thousand and twenty-four. After our fourth quarterly report, we met to discuss Resolutions 14 and 15 of 2024. Resolution 14 of 2024 is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional service agreement with Alexandra Building Construction &amp; Co. to serve as construction manager for certain city island improvements and facility upgrades to the city-owned stadium presently known as FNB Field. Director Baker was present to present for the administration. Alexandra &amp; Co. was also present to give more information on how they would be most efficient in overseeing work, quality control checks, budgets, et cetera. Terrell Davis, which, who would be the Budget Director, and Dan Flickerter, who serves as the Project Manager for Alexandra &amp; Co., did not come with a presentation for us as council, but instead asked us if we had any questions for them or needed any clarification on the resolution, clarification on the resolution. Kevin Colp, the President of the Harrisburg Senators, was also president, present at the meeting to present more information on Resolution 14. He explained that the MLB sent down mandated upgrades to all major and minor league facilities. These mandated updates are critical in establishing compliance and keeping the Harrisburg Senators and Harrisburg in playing at City Island. Questions from my fellow council members were the following. What other projects have you worked on that are similar to the FNB Field? Their answer were similar projects are Beaver Stadium and the Lehigh Valley Iron Pigs. Their other question was about their, how they would, if they had a goal for incorporating equality within who they hired, and they said, "We don't have a particular goal, but we do have a goal of making sure there is minority participation and an education component." Next, Resolution 15 of 2024 was presented to council. This is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional service agreement with Ewing Co. to serve as an architect for certain city island improvements and facility upgrades to the city-owned stadium known as FNB Field. Mr. Smith and Mr. Schumer explained that the President, President of the Senators reached out to their company to see how they would complete the MLB-recommended renovations for the Harrisburg Senators Stadium. Lastly, Mr. Schumer explained that if the council voted yes, he and the firm would draw up all the technical pieces, and then the project would be put out for bid. Council members did not have any questions. We all needed more time to look over the resolution. I recommend that my, I recommend that my fellow council members vote yes for both Resolutions 14 and 15, and 15 after they get the rest, the rest of the information they need, because the FNB Stadium and the Harrisburg Senators are not only a revenue stream, but a staple of the Harrisburg community. Their presence provides a continuous opportunity for our youth to dream and strive for a chance to play baseball in their hometown of Harrisburg, PA. Thank you, and that ends the, that concludes the committee report for the Parks and Recreation and Enrichment Department and Facilities and Special Projects.
Thank you. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. We will move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration is Resolution 14 of 2024. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution 14 of 2024. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Alexander Building Construction Company to serve as construction manager for certain city island improvements and facility upgrades to the city-owned stadium presently known as FNB Field.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 14 of 2024?
Yes. Just for Neil, just to make sure that, you know, I did have several questions regarding these resolutions and the amount that these are, the money that's going to be spent, and just for clarity for our community to understand as well. This money that we're going to spend for this was, is being rolled forward from last year, correct?
Correct. The council had voted both in the end of '23 and in '24 to appropriate funds, some in this year's budget, some, some in the 2023 budget. And then the, the outline is there'll be another appropriation in 2025 to complete it. This is, the engine, Alexander is the construction manager, who will be the ones who vet bids coming in for, for the component parts. And we won't really have a full number until we see that. There's estimates by people of what the total cost is.
Is that 12 million?
Yeah, ballpark 12 million, but I've seen it go from 11 to 15 with different versions of this. They, 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 they have reduced the footprint a bit because of the cost to keep it, to bring it down. But that's with no contractors having bid yet. The construction manager is to put a professional organization who runs a construction project, so we're not guessing. You know, and so that, so their job is to help organize that with, with Mr. Baker and the facilities people, and to meet the Major League Baseball guidelines we have to meet in order to keep a team here. The, but, and I, I apologize, I don't remember the number that's in the budget right now between the roll forward and that, but they, they will both cover these professional services and more. Most of that money's supposed to go to construction. These two together will be a professional services fees.
And my other question will be, any of that money coming back to the city?
The city has a $6 million, what's called a RACP grant. It, it will not bring back professional services money, it'll bring back construction money. So, so if that's a match, so if we spend 12 million on it, we get 6 million back, so let's cap that. You know, there has been discussions of whether during this year, additional grant money will be pursued as we get a better sense from the construction manager, the total cost. You know, but it's sort of a step at a time.
All right. I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Council members, are there any other questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 14 of 2024? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution 14 of 2024 passes with a vote of five yays to one nay, including one absence.
Thank you. The next resolution we have is Resolution 15 of 2024. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 15 of 2024. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Ewing Co. to serve as architect for certain city island improvements and facility upgrades to the city-owned stadium known as FNB Field.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 15 of 2024? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution 15 of 2024 also passes with a vote of five yays, one nay, include, and also with one absence.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 16 of 2024. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution 16 of 2024. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a landowner grantee agreement with the Capital Area Green Belt Association in furtherance of design, construction, and restoration of the Paxton Parkway Creek and Trail.
Thank you. Resolution 16 of 2024 will move to the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee. Next, we have Resolution 17 of 2024. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution 17 of 2024. A resolution approving the second proposed 2024 budget reallocation in order to appropriate certain monies locally designated as revenue replacement funding through an award under the American Rescue Plan Act to provide for specified projects.
Thank you. Resolution 17 of 2024 will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Next, we have Resolution 18 of 2024. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution 18 of 2024. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to award funding in the amount of $40,000 to the Capital Area Green Belt Association for the performance of maintenance on city-owned land in the Capital Area Green Belt.
Thank you. Resolution 18 of 2024 will also move to the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee. Our final resolution this evening is Resolution 19 of 2024. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution 19 of 2024. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Wallace Montgomery &amp; Associates, LLP, to provide transportation planning and engineering services on an as-needed basis.
Thank you. Resolution 19 of 2024 will move to the Public Works Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members?
Yes, I'm still waiting for the legal opinion regarding the conflicts of interest.
Which I'm not delivering.
Okay, then going forward, today I gave the courtesy of no votes. Going forward, you will have to seek mandamus for my votes.
You're the elected official, not me.
Is there any other old business for discussion? Seeing and hearing none, new business?
Yes, thank you, President Bowers. I just wanted to talk about a few things happening in Harrisburg this weekend. Join Harrisburg this Saturday, March 16, at 2:00 PM for the city's annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. Also, join the Love of Life for a march to save our children's lives. The march will take place on Saturday, March 16, from 11:00 to 4:00 PM. The meeting point will be at North Third Street, Harrisburg, PA. On Monday, March 18, CATCH will be hosting a debate for the 10th Congressional District at the Nativity School. The event will begin at 6:00 PM. And just looking ahead, Saturday, March 23, Harrisburg City will be hosting an Easter Bunny Blast from 11:00 to 1:00 PM at Sunshine Park. And for more information for any more events on Harrisburg, please visit our webpage at harrisburgpa.gov. That's it for me.
Thank you. Any other new business? Seeing and hearing none, the time is 7:23 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion.
Okay, all right. It's been moved and properly seconded. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.